Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please, for Eddie Crusoe, longtime city employee, entrepreneur, man of many hats, was laid to rest this weekend, and I just want the family to know we're all thinking of him. Thank you.
Any moment of silence in general for all those here today and not for the holiday season. Thank you. Your next up, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yeah.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Racles.
Here. We have nine, nine present, eight in chambers, one electronic. Next up, approval of mayor's address, I'm sorry.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you. This is my address for the week of December 18th, 2023, starting with my activity log. Last meeting, I informed you all of the personnel change we had at the Hammond Sanitary District in regards to the chief executive officer. Obviously, lots of meetings over the last couple of weeks catching everybody up with what's going on there. I met with all board members at this point, most employees of the sanitary district. We've decided for the time being, with the holidays and everything, to leave the position open until further notice. Want to remind people that all technical people in the Hammond Sanitary District are still in place, so we are always 100% ready for any heavy rainfall or anything else Mother Nature throws at us. The position of chief executive officer is more of the businessperson for the district. He's the person that speaks with the customers and works with the council and works with government agencies. That's the position that's open. Right now, the chief of staff, Phil Taylor, myself, and Joe Allegrini, the attorney for the Hammond Sanitary District, are filling the role that Mr. Wilkis used to fill. So until the holidays, we're gonna probably run with this. Hopefully shortly after the new year begins, we'll get the new chief executive of the sanitary district. Met with department heads in the Hammond Police Department, captains and chiefs in our normal monthly meeting. Met with officials from the community hospital and mayor's office regarding options for Hammond residents with the closure of the Franciscan Hospital in Hammond. I think that they're worried about Munster Community Hospital being overburdened with residents from Hammond. They don't think that there's enough hospital capacity with the closure of Franciscan in downtown Hammond. I would have to agree, and they were giving us some ideas on how to help them out with the heavy flow that's going to community hospital. Had dinner with Representative Mike Andrade regarding the upcoming legislative session. I know Representative Carolyn Jackson was here earlier. I met with Carolyn Jackson for lunch regarding the upcoming legislative session. Held the annual City Hammond Employee Christmas Party. I want to thank the council people that attended the annual event. When I took over as mayor 20 years ago, all Christmas parties in the City Hammond were small and all departments had different events. We put together the City Employee Christmas Party, and over the years, it's gotten bigger and bigger. I'd like to say, I'm very happy to report that we had over 700 people at the Hammond Civic Center for the Employee Christmas Party, including our spouses. It's the largest event we've held since I've been mayor, probably one of the largest we've ever held for the City Hammond. So thank you to the council people that helped plan that and attended. Thank you to the city employees. It's nice to get together once a year like that. So met with officials from the Hammond Police Department in regards to a planned protest that took place on Sunday over the weekend at Hammond First Baptist Church. Had breakfast with the CEO of the Indiana Quantum Corridor about the quantum corridors project and the type of impact it could have on the City Hammond and particularly downtown Hammond. Met with the new mayor, Lawrence, Mayor-elect Deb Winfield for dinner. Mayors meet with me often to try to get their feet on the ground before they take place, before they take office. Lunch with LaPorte County Commissioner regarding projects of a shared interest between LaPorte County and the City Hammond. Met with Water Department CEO and Number Two in regards to a business office reorganization. I would like to also point out to, I think it's important for the council to know that the Hammond Water Department put in a bid for the old bank building in downtown Hammond, the old People's Bank in downtown Hammond. The Hammond Water Department wants to relocate their business office off 165th and Columbia and bring it to downtown Hammond in this bigger building. I'm not sure if the offer has been accepted, but if it does, Hammond Water Department plans to build a new business in downtown Hammond, the business office where we pay our water bills. So we'll keep you apprised on what's going on with that. I met with the leadership of the First Baptist Church, Pastor Wilkerson, and his upper management in the mayor's office in regards to a planned protest for downtown Hammond. Held a four-hour staff retreat at the Hammond Marina for all department heads, all Number Two department heads, and all board presidents. Four hours, real good meeting. We do it usually at least once a year. It was a good staff retreat. Attended the 40th anniversary of A Christmas Story at the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau. The entire cast of A Christmas Story was present in Hammond, Indiana for the first time in 40 years, including Ralphie. Over 10,000 people RSVP'd for the event at the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau, and thousands of people stood in the rain for hours to meet all the actors. It was a very, very positive event for the City Hammond. I want to thank Mayor Dave, Dave Yurin, the CEO of the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau for putting on this event. I think it was outstanding. So I want to thank them for all their hard work and for bringing it to the Hammond. I think that was great. Supervised protest along with the Hammond Police Department and the Hammond First Baptist Church, attended by about 100 protesters, totally peaceful. So had breakfast with Mayor-elect Angie Nelson-Deutsch from Michigan City earlier today. Held a meeting in the mayor's office with Hespel Political, Business, and Nonprofit Leadership regarding planned pedestrian bridge over the train tracks by Scott Middle School. So that's pretty much my last couple of weeks. Been very busy. It's hard to believe that Christmas is right around the corner because we're still going real hard in City Hall. Third and final reading up tonight. I know you all have the elected official salary ordinance needs to be passed before December 31st. I think that's the only thing that has to be passed before the end of the year. I know you guys are talking about the food and beverage tax. You have a resolution in support of the concept. I want to point out for the audience, for Hammond residents, this is exploratory. We're gonna see if the General Assembly would give Hammond permission to do this. The General Assembly could easily say no. The resolution does nothing other than tells the General Assembly we're open-minded on the concept. If they gave us the ability to pass this tax, we would have to come back to Hammond, hold a public hearing, talk to our residents about what we plan to do with the money. So the food and beverage tax, if it's passed, is a 20-year tax, 1% on all prepared meals. Go to a restaurant, order a drink at a bar, things like that. Go to a fast food restaurant, 1%. I had a council lunch today, four council members, a few people from my administration. The entire bill was $184. It would have added $1.84 to that meal. So, and it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but adding $1.84 to that meal I had today, along with all the food and beverage transactions that take place on Horseshoe Casino, along with everything that takes place in restaurants across the City Hammond, that tax over a 20-year period would generate $50 million. We're doing a study on it right now, working with Munster to see if Munster's interested in going along with us on this. But like I said, even though if you all pass the resolution tonight, if the General Assembly says no, nothing happens, and they could easily say no. Even if the General Assembly says yes, Hammond, you could look into this, we still have to come back for two meetings and a public hearing. So what you're doing tonight is just starting the ball rolling. It's not even anywhere near close to completion. And quite frankly, a lot of cities are not successful in this endeavor, so they could easily say no. I do want to point that out. But if you say no tonight, we're dead in the water. So I hope that you guys will consider. We have three, I know we're gonna talk about this more later. I'll just save a lot of my comments for that. You all have the omnibus ordinance before you. Omnibus ordinance is a multitude of small fee increases. Some of them are only gonna raise $26,000 annually, which is the oversized weight load on heavy-duty trucks. Ambulance user fees is higher. That's more gonna be charged to insurance companies. Credit card transaction fees is $50,000 annually. Increased mobile food truck license fees, which is $8,000 annually. And I know we're talking about increasing fees for the garbage cans and things of that nature, all built into that omnibus bill. We've been talking about a lot of these fee increases for the past year, and we all agreed that we were gonna put it off until now. So this is the omnibus bill we've been talking about. If anybody has any questions, I'll be here for that as well. And I know Megan forwarded ARPA 3.0, American Rescue Plan Act 3.0, which is basically closing out a lot of the projects we started, shifting money around. And the capital improvement board fronted the City Hammond a couple million dollars, and the capital improvement board gets paid back as well under this proposal. So we have exact breakdowns on why we're transferring and how much we're transferring, because some of the projects ran over, some of the projects were never started, some of the projects ran under, and this is just cleaning that up. So unless you have any questions, that's my report for the week. I do want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, with Christmas being one week away. It's hard to believe we're still working real hard in City Hall. Usually things slow down, but it is not slow right now. So I don't know if the council has any questions.
Do you may have any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Mayor, with the food and beverage tax, can you kind of just talk about what those funds could possibly go to the fund?
Yes, sir. I will. I was gonna say, but that's fine, Councilman. I appreciate it. We expect, if it's passed, like I said, my $184 meal today would have been $1.84 extra. That is, we're doing a study with Town of Munster right now on how much it would exactly generate. It's being estimated to generate anywhere from $2 to $2.5 million a year, Councilman, for 20 years. So if you do quick math, that's 40 million to 50 million. And we're gonna, the study we're doing is gonna iron that out exactly how much it would generate. So if we knew, and this is only, if it's passed, it would only be passed for 20 years. That's the only, that's all the General Assembly would give you, is 20 years. So in 20 years, we would have to pay for all the debt for all the projects that we wanted to create with that tax. So if we knew it was gonna create $50 million over 20 years, which is around what we expect, you could probably do about $30 million worth of projects in the City Hammond and still finance it. So $30 million right now is significant to add $1.84 to every meal. That also includes, like I said, fast food. So if you go to Wendy's, like I do in the morning, I get my breakfast sandwich, and it costs me $7.50, it would cost me an extra, what, seven cents? That's what I'm talking about. It's not a big tax. And for the people that don't like tax, and there's plenty of them out there, I acknowledge, the easiest way to avoid this tax is to not go out to dinner. If you don't go out to dinner, you will not pay this. This is a voluntary tax. So that's a little bit, I'm sure we're gonna get into it more, Councilman. We can get into detail about the projects that are being talked about, okay? If you don't mind.
Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like to wish you a Merry Christmas, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilman. You too.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks to all the council. It's nice to see you all. I'll wait for further questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from December 4th, 2023. Be placed on file, please.
Second.
A motion as second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I request approval of claims, beginning with claims dated December 5th, 2023, and ending with claims dated December 13th, 2023. Claim number 8424 through claim number 9004 inclusive, in the amount of $6,128,218.49. I so move.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Like to amend in claim 9005 in the amount of $1,000 to Haven House from the Hammond Police Department. It is a donation from the Hammond Police Department to Haven House that they received, and they want to move it on to Haven House.
Okay, we have a second. Second by Councilwoman Vines to amend 9005 in, from each Hammond Police Department to Haven House, in the amount of $1,000. Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. Councilman Alexander, are you there? Okay. amended claims passes 801 absent. Now, claims as amended.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. Claims as amended passes eight, eight yes, zero no, and one absent. Next up, public hearings, we have none. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just want to express condolences from the entire city council to the Burns family on the passing of Mother Dear, or Mary Burns, who was 101 years old. Her, the Burns family, the Moore family, they've been a staple in our community for a very long time. And so although she lived a long and happy and impactful life, still want to offer condolences to that entire family, as well as to the family of Mr. Byron Burns. His mother, Derry Gibson Burns, is a city employee, and he passed away as well. Both of those services are this week, so just want to offer our condolences to those families, especially during the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I just received a communication from Gary and Sylvester, the guy and the dog that come to, he wants to wish the entire council a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Gary.
Merry Christmas to you, Gary and Sylvester.
And Sylvester. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman. Yes, Councilman.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Kowinski.
Thank you. Hammond-based Fiber Ex won a statewide agricultural innovation challenge that will provide it with startup capital to get its idea off the ground. The startup company, which works with corn growers to make corn stover into a feedstock for the chemical and materials sectors, won the 2023 Producer-led Innovation Challenge. Dave Skabinski from Pulaski Park and others from Fiber Ex won a $25,000 grant to help commercialize their idea. They already won a manufacturing readiness grant from Conexus, Indiana, and an innovation voucher for Elevate Ventures for their idea. Just want to commend a longtime family in the North Hammond area, the Skabinski family, who attended St. Cas, Bishop No, IU, is still doing great things, starting up companies as he has in the past. Good work, Dave, and the rest of the group. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Alexander, did you try to offer communications?
Yes, I was trying. Yes, my phone is getting ready to dive, and I'll jump back in in a second. But the holiday treats giveaway, we'll be releasing the form tonight. Just a note, the giveaway will be this Thursday at the Hammond Civic Center from 6:00 to 8:00. Once you register, you will be receiving a gift, so you will get a notification from the website that you are registered. We're just asking that you will be here in the parking lot across from the Civic Center to receive the items. You will drive in there. Someone will get you your number, and then they will proceed you across the street. We're asking that if the form does get shut down, we're just monitoring numbers to make sure that we have enough toys for everyone. So we will also make a note if we open it back up to go ahead and continue to register. That's my note for leaving. It would, again, that'll be this Thursday, December 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Hammond Civic Center. We'll release the form to register later tonight.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Capital Improvements Board met on, it was last Monday, so the 11th, and item that was passed was a $29,800 allocation with first group for Phase 2 of the environmental study done on the Marquette-Greenway Kennedy decline, and it was a study required by NDOT.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, there is one crime watch meeting coming up. That is tomorrow night. The East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at 6:00 PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. And from all the community and crime watch groups in the City of Hammond, we'd like to wish you all Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and everyone, please be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Just to echo Councilman Warple's thoughts in terms of the Capitol Improvements Board, just want to share with the public that that board, the representatives from the city council will be changing over after January 1. So it's been my pleasure serving on the Capitol Improvements Board for the past three years, and I'm excited about the future of that committee, and congratulations to the new three appointees from the city council, unofficial but official, to the CIB, and good luck with serving on that board in the new year.
Thank you. Do we have another committee report?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Council, do we report out what we're bringing out?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I thought you said we did.
I thought that's.
Okay. Council as a whole will be bringing out 2329, 2330, 2331, 2332, and 2333. Is there another one?
2334 as well?
Yeah, 2334.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Next up, ordinance, third and final, third reading, final passage.
Ordinance 2329, sponsored by Mayor McDermott, and ordinance fixing these salaries for elected officials for the City of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January 1, 2024, be it ordained by the common council of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Move for final adoption, final passage and adoption of that ordinance.
2329?
Yeah.
Second.
Put them back in my folder already.
Who's the second?
Second.
Councilman Spitali, second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and Councilman Alexander also votes yes. Passes 90.
She has to be visible.
Can we see you? There we go. Thank you.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-30, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city 2023 budgets.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for final passage of 2330.
A motion as second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion on 2330? Any discussion on 2330? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. 2330 passes 90.
Ordinance 23-31, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, Councilwoman Vines, Councilman Warple, and Councilman Racles, and omnibus ordinance of the City of Hammond to amend certain sections of the Hammond Municipal Code.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of 2331.
Second.
A second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
On page, hold on.
Are you offering an amendment?
Yes, I'd like to amend this. On page 3, section 5, I would like to change section 117.005 BC to amend time restrictions from 7:00 PM closure time to 10:00 PM closure time. And this is in regard to the, I'm looking for the page, the food trucks. Also, on page 4, section 6, change section 94041A to amend $22 to $21, the current monthly garbage fee, to correct a typo, and also to amend this section to remove the words, "Or by a schedule approved by the Board of Public Works and Safety and the Director of the Department of Public Works." I so move.
We have amendment to 2331.
Second.
Your second by Councilman Tyler.
Mr. President.
Any discussion on the amendment for 2331?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilmore.
I would like to, as that amendment, just amend in ordinance 2331A that spells out the changes she made, that just to correct language is in the actual amended ordinance of 2331A. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt.
2331A in its entirety?
Correct, in its entirety. And it, basically, it indicates what she just said.
Thank you, Councilman Warple.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Warple, and a second by Councilman Emerson to amend in 2331A in its entirety, the past 2331A. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
This is a correct, we discovered this at lunch today. The way the ordinance was written mentioned if there was gonna be a garbage rate increase in the future, which this ordinance doesn't tackle. But it says if there was gonna be a rate increase for garbage fees in the future, it would have given the Board of Public Works permission to do that without coming to the council. I didn't like that, because some of the criticism I've been hearing from the council is the fear that too much power has been consolidated into the administration. So I didn't think it was fair for the mayor to have to make a decision like that on their own through the Board of Works. So we decided to pull that out in light of the concerns we're hearing from the council. And if we ever have to do a garbage rate increase, it'll be its own separate ordinance, where the public will know exactly what's going on. It won't be done through the Board of Public Works. That's what the councilwoman, that's the amendment she brought up, so that it would remove the power to raise these fees from the Board of Public Works, as it was written originally. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Any other discussion on 2331A? Any discussion on 2331A?
Just for clarification, the motion is to amend 2331 with 2331A, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion on 2331A? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
2331A passes eight zero, no nays and one absent. That takes care of 2331 in its entirety, correct, Council, Clerk Golick?
That's just the amendment now as amended. It was a motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Spitali on the original motion, so now it's as amended. Need a roll call of that.
All right, roll call on 2331 as amended.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Passes eight zero, one absent.
Ordinance 23-32 sponsored by Councilman Spitali. An ordinance creating a new fund, Fund Number 2483, for the rural and small department violent crime reduction program funds awarded to the city of Hammond Police Department.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage, 2332.
Second.
Second by Councilman Warple. Motion by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
2332 passes eight zero with one absent.
Ordinance 23-33 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. An ordinance creating a new fund, Number 2502, for the diesel emission reduction supplemental environmental project funds allocated to the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2333.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tyler. 2333, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This is just establishing a new line item for potential dollars that may come from BP as the result of an EPA requirement that they spent $1.25 million to replace existing diesel vehicles.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
2333 passes eight zero, one absent.
Ordinance 2334 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. An ordinance creating a new fund, Number 4655, for the funds allocated to the city of Hammond by Lake County, Indiana, for the construction of Fire Station Number Two.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2334.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This is just creating a new line item for the $2.1 million that is coming to us from Lake County for the construction of Fire Station Number Two.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call on 2334.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
2334 passes eight zero, one absent.
President Rakos, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Councilman, I mean Clerk Golick. Next up would be introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance, Item A, Ordinance 2335, and sponsored by Councilman, or Councilwoman Vines. An ordinance to further appropriate from the area coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act, version 3.0.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2335, refer to council as a whole with the committee meeting January 8, 2024, at 5:15 PM.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilman Tyler, introduction of ordinance 23-35, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Pardon? Oh, excuse me, Mr. President.
Yes.
Yes, regarding 2335, I move that we schedule a public hearing on January 8.
Okay, during our regular council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so next up, 2336, I'm sorry, go ahead, Council, Clerk Golick.
Item B. Ordinance 2336 sponsored by Councilman Tyler. An ordinance vacating a 15-foot portion of alley lying between Sherman Street to the south and Summer Street to the north and West Parcel Line of Lot 42 to the east line of Lot 12 and the southeasternly 20 feet of Lot 42 in the second block of Steel Car Works addition in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I move for first and second passage of ordinance 23-36, refer to council as a whole for committee meeting on January 8, 2024, as well as a public hearing on January 8, 2024. Second.
A motion and a second by Councilman Warple, first and second reading, 23-36, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
23-36, first and second reading, eight zero, one absent.
President Rakos, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Had to write this thing. Next up, resolutions.
Item A. Resolution 23R-08 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. A resolution adopting a supplemental community investment plan, version number three, for the city of Hammond for the use of funds provided under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for final passage of 23R-08.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tyler on 23-08, resolution. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This outlines the version three of the American Rescue Plan Act and what our intentions are with the remaining money that is there. And it outlines, this particular resolution outlines the projects, and it affects each of the six districts in the city of Hammond.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Is there?
She was there.
She was there.
What was the vote again?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
23R8 passes nine zero.
Item B. Resolution Number 23R-09 sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution in support of legislation proposing a 1% municipal food and beverage tax in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage, 23R09.
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilman Warple for 23R09. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I'd like to be added as a sponsor to this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to be added as a sponsor of this.
All right, so we have Councilman Spitali, Warple, and Emerson added as sponsors of
Mr. President.
Yes, Council, I mean.
We've had multiple meetings with state representatives and state senators from Indiana about this bill. I'm very optimistic that we have a shot in the General Assembly. The food and beverage tax has been available for Lake County for 20 years, 10? I mean, almost as long as I've been mayor, if not that entire time. And for a number of reasons, the county council and the county commissioners have been unable and unwilling to move this forward. So a lot of times when you talk to the legislators downstate, they tell us, we're not going to help you until you use the tools we've given to you. And they're talking about this. They're talking about things like, well, they used to say it about the income tax before the county moved on that issue, but because the state views the county is probably unlikely to pass this tax, they're giving the option to municipalities. Maryville, the town of Maryville, during the last legislative session was the first Northwest Indiana community to get this power. They're going through the process, as we speak, to pass the tax in Maryville, and they plan to fund a huge expansion of the Dean and Barbara White Center so that they could expand the volleyball, which is exactly what they want to do to compete with Hammond. Quite frankly, volleyball is where we make a lot of our money at Sportsplex, and the fact that they want to invest in volleyball shows us that if we don't respond appropriately, we're going to lose all we've gained with the Sportsplex. So that's definitely one of the projects we're talking about. We're also talking about the downtown Hammond train station. It's about an $8 million project. Won't be paid for by the federal government, won't be paid for by the NICD expansion because it's all going to be done by then. But we do have a pad picked out, it's been designed and engineered, we just need the money. This project would fit nicely into that as well. So we're talking about Sportsplex, between the 3rd and the 5th District, two projects there with, and then the South Shore Expansion in the second for downtown Hammond. And there's some talk about looking at the pavilion in the 1st District and trying to see if it's possible to make it more of a venue that could play through the entire summer, maybe sort of like White River Park in Indianapolis, has a roof on it, basically. Not enclosed, but if a rainstorm happened, you would still be able to put the show on. And that's something we're looking at, we haven't really dove into that one yet because I think it's going to require partnerships that we don't have at this point. But this is, I think it's a great opportunity to develop Hammond. You can't really find $30 million worth of projects that we could do. And like I said, my $184 meal today would have cost $1.84 extra. So I think it's a good deal personally. I hope that the council considers this resolution. Again, as I said earlier, passing the resolution does nothing for the tax at all, it just starts the ball rolling. If the General Assembly gives us permission to move forward on this, we have to come back to you, go through first and second reading, go through third and final, go through a public hearing, we'll have to do all that if we decide to move forward on this issue. So this does nothing at all. If the General Assembly doesn't act, nothing happens, it's just a resolution. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call on 83R9.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
23R9 passes nine zero.
Mr. President. I request that the entire council be added as sponsors of this resolution. If everyone is in agreement, I certainly would like to be added as a sponsor. I think that the weight of the entire council will have more of an impact when this resolution goes to Indianapolis. So I would like to be added as a sponsor.
Anybody else wish to be added as a sponsor? Anybody else wish to be added as a sponsor? All right, Councilwoman Vines will be added as a sponsor.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I requested I be added as.
Well, yes, you were already added.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up.
Item C. Resolution 23R-10 sponsored by Councilman Kowinski. A resolution to reappoint Melissa Farrell to the Gaming Advisory Committee of the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for final adoption of Resolution 23-10.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilman Warple, 23R10, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Most of the council members know Mrs. Farrell from all her activity with Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association and all the gardens in that neighborhood that she tends to, to make the area more pleasant for residents that live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
23R10 passes nine zero.
Item D. Resolution 23R-11 sponsored by Councilman Emerson. A resolution confirming the reappointment of Carrie Hutton Lasous as a commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move for final passage of 23R-11.
Second.
A motion and a second by Councilman Warple for 23R11, any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Carrie Hutton Lasous has served on the Human Relations Commission, and her commission has expired, but Sharon Daniels tells me she has been to all the meetings, and everybody has been proud of what she's done, so I move for that.
Thank you, Council Emerson. Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. 2311 passes 9-0.
Item E, Resolution 23R-12, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution to appoint Suzette M. Kabaki to the Hammond Redevelopment Commission.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for final passage of 23R-12.
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Ms. Kabaki is a longtime volunteer in the 1st district with the Hammond Mohawks, with St. Casimir School, is a co-chairman for the Memorial Day Parade, is a homeowner in the district for the past 33 years, and is also a real estate broker, and will bring her talents and skills, and I think they'll appreciate what she brings to the table.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. 2312 passes 9-0.
Item F, Resolution 23R-13, sponsored by Councilman Rakels. A resolution to appoint Susan Stevens to the Hammond Economic Development Commission.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I move for passage of Resolution 23R13.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalwinski. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. 2313 passes 9-0.
President Rakels, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I just wanted to wish Jake Jacobs a happy birthday, Clerk Golick a happy birthday, and happy anniversary to my husband who's at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I make a motion that we reappoint Leslie Miller to the Mayor's Gaming Advisory Commission.
Second.
The motion is second. What was the name beginning of that? I'm sorry.
Leslie Miller.
Leslie Miller, Mayor's Gaming Advisory. Any discussion? Second by Councilman Warpo. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes 9-0.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I make another motion that we reappoint Greg Myricks to the Redevelopment Commission.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Warpo. Reappoint Greg Myricks also to the Gaming.
Redevelopment.
Redevelopment, that's right. Sorry. Redevelopment. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
She was there.
She said yeah.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes 9-0.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
We're still on the.
We're still on the unfinished business, yes.
Okay. Being my last meeting on this Hammond council, again, I would like to thank everybody that I work with, especially my colleagues, has been a good eight years. We had some agreements, some disagreements, but we were able to work it out. The clerk's office were always great with anything I requested. The mayor, the department heads, the staff. So I appreciate it. And I'm going to keep this short. Going to wish my successor, he's in the audience, a lot of success in the coming years. And if you don't mind, Mr. Afonso Zalinas, can you come up here a second? Got a little Christmas present for you. I would like to officially welcome you to the council. I represent the district with honor and dignity, do the best for the citizens. And the residents, they are the best that we have in the city. And with this, you can have a council jacket. Thank you very much. It does look like that. Also, you have a council shirt. And you can have the bag. Okay. And lots of luck to you.
We'll miss you, Councilman. All right, any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warpo.
I know you're dying, so. What would the year be without one final story from me, huh? I just wanted to say that the mayor spoke about the character or the cast of A Christmas Story being here, and Tom Novak was here earlier, and he had the pleasure for the first time since the movie's been out in 40 years of taking the cast around and showing them the sights, mainly in the 6th district, of where Gene Shepard lived, where some of the other characters lived, where some of the scenes allegedly happened. And I know it's accurate because he did it based on the stories I told him.
He could have invited us though, couldn't he?
Well, I was still sleeping when he did it. But it all had to be accurate if it came from me, so. That's all.
Thank you.
And by the way, Councilman Torres, it's been a pleasure working with you. I got to admit, when I first got on the council, I came halfway through that first year. I won't say I was scared, I was nervous or whatever, and everybody on this council made me feel welcome, and Al, we welcomed you to the council.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Councilman Torres, it's been an absolute pleasure. You are a true gentleman, and I'm really going to miss working with you. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I want to comment on Councilman Torres's classiness and his gentleman-ness, his kindness, and always putting his residents first, no matter what. Been a pleasure. Good luck, and we'll see you down the road.
Okay.
President.
Yes.
And good job. The biggest building in the city of Hammond, the Oriente, they're together. And the deputy director of the Oriente.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Pete, you've sat next to me for all this time, and I'm going to miss you. You're a great guy. You served the city of Hammond as a police officer and as a council member, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just to echo everybody's sentiments, Councilman Torres, we appreciate you for all your service. You've been committed to this country, to the city, for your entire life, so we thank you for everything you've done, for teaching me so much in my first term, and I know you'll still be around to help us out when we need it. So like Councilman Kalwinski said, we'll see you down the line.
Councilman Torres, we first met, what, 30 years ago, and you were on the police department as a dispatcher for, he's always a gentleman even then, despite the fact that he was a police officer. And then when we came on the council together, we added a police officer and a firefighter to the council, and immediately upgraded immensely, mostly because of you. Thank you, I'll miss you.
Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I also wanted to give my farewell to Councilman Torres and thank him for all the help that he's done in the last term for myself and just being a sweet man that he is. And just watching what he did with our councilman-elect shows who he is as a person and how he is defined in his character. So thank you for that. Wish you farewell, but I know we'll continue to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Holy, kind of looked my desk. Public expression.
I have a couple of flyers. Good evening, council members. Thank you, Pete, for serving. You're a really good guy. Appreciate it. I know the talk of the town is the Let Us Pray documentary, but I wanted to bring people's attention to another documentary that's featuring Hammond that's coming up. It's called Walkable USA. It's on PBS, and it's documenting our transition for the downtown Hammond to be more walkable. And I really love that, and they made a documentary about it. So you can watch it on Lake Shore Media PBS, on the TV or online, on December 28th at 8:00 PM, and December 31st at 11:00 AM. I want to congratulate Hammond again for that achievement. And, you know, I love a lot of the projects that Hammond is doing, and I would love to work with the city to bring them to fruition. And I just want to send out a plea, you know, I would like the city to work with us more. So at the Mayor's Night Out in November, we had brought up the NDOT presentation that I laid out slides for you. In the bottom right-hand corner, it shows the price for Grand Avenue Overpass, which is something that NDOT considered. And it costs $8,480,000. And we brought this up, and Mayor McDermott and the city engineer Dean Button repeatedly said that that was never considered, and that NDOT never looked into it. And then we pulled up the presentation at Mayor's Night Out and said, we have it right here. And they asked if we were making stuff up. And I don't like that because the mayor said he ran on this issue. And he's blatantly misrepresenting the facts. And Dean Button is on the design team for this project. His face was in the same PowerPoint these slides were in. And he said that we never looked into a Grand Avenue Overpass. And it's hard, you know, I want to work with the city on this, but it's hard to if the city administration keeps misleading people on this issue. Was that three minutes? I just wanted to point out, the governor's parkway in that same presentation was $11.6 million. The Northwest Indiana Times has since speculated it would cost about $14 million now, in addition to a pedestrian walkway of $5 million, which would also bring possible additional home relocations, bringing the grand total to at least $16.6 million, twice as much as a Grand Avenue Overpass.
George Stoya, would you like to speak today? I see you on Zoom. Okay, I don't hear anything. Next up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, Council.
Thank you.
Hold on one second.
I just wanted, I'm sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, George. Hold on a second.
Okay, I just wanted to say, no, I'm good, but thank you. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Merry Christmas, George.
That's good.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, Ken, I'll start you now. I didn't start you already.
Thank you. Greetings, Council. Our group of residents and activists known as the Hessfeld Dune Dusters just achieved 1,000 members this day before yesterday. Our numbers are consistently growing as word gets out about the environmental policies of this administration. In the woods, everything seems dormant and lifeless this time of the year. You only need to look a little closer to observe God's creatures already at work preparing for next season. The woods offer a dramatically different experience during the spring and summer and fall when they are covered with plants and filled with wildlife. Today, at first glance, it looks like nature has batted down the hatches. You can sure tell the expressways are a lot louder without all the leaves on the trees now. Red-tailed hawks are replenishing their nests of last year. Bald eagles have been spotted just hanging out in our woods. Owls and other animals are easier to see without the foliage. It's been over a century since these species lived in our area. They were shot as predators and poisoned by DDT over the years. 100 years later, they are returning to our neighborhood and our woods. So now is the time to destroy their habitat and drive them out again. Today, we have a clear understanding of our relationship with nature. We can't claim ignorance this time. We know what's at stake. Does this really sound like something good for the community? This destruction will have detrimental effects to the wellness of the community and to our quality of life. quality of life. Does that sound like a good idea? Especially when we have an alternative that would service the entire neighborhood better? The so-called permanent solution of a pedestrian bridge is nothing more than a desperate remedy to a failed design. In closing, I want to say a few words about Councilman Pete Torres. There are a few people I've met throughout my life that have made positive impressions in a very profound way. You, sir, are one of them. Councilman, I have come to know you as a man of extreme integrity and class. Your service to this country, this town as a cop, and your neighborhood has been outstanding. You were the only council member that would give us the time of day and listen to our concerns. For that, I am deeply grateful. It gave us hope and optimism that someone cared. I'm a better man for knowing you, sir. I mean that with the deepest sincerity. I wish you all Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ken. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ken.
Motion to adjourn.
Come on, I have one more if I can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ernie Dillon.
Sorry, Ernie.
Ernie Dillon, 5963 Park Place, Hammond, Indiana, Westmore 1, 2066. Mr. President and honorable Hammond City Council members, I stand before you to congratulate you and thank you for all that you've done throughout the year, and further back for the American Legion Hammond Victory Post 168, and would like to award a presentation to those who did not get their certificates from our legion earlier in the year, on April 15th. And that would be Mayor McDermott, and I have an award for him, and basically it honors and appreciates what they've done over time to help the American Legion Post 168. And to show the audience, it looks like this. And so, I mentioned to the mayor, he had something to do, so I will take his to his office at some other point. And Councilman Robert Golick, you helped and supported all year. In my opinion, you very rarely get recognized, but I'm here to honor you and recognize you for what you've done to the American Legion, and I'll present these to the president when I'm finished. Also, so we have your certificate, and Councilman Barry Tyler, Third District Councilman, we have your certificate of appreciation, and also the oath and the creed of the American Legion. This is from the Department of Indiana. And William Emerson, Bill Emerson, we have your certificate also, and I know you had other plans that day, so I want to make those presentations. And I guess to follow up and in conclusion, I want to recognize former Hammond City Councilman Dave Hamm. And it's good seeing you, Dave. He and I sat together here once upon a time, hung out. Anyway, for Pete Torres, Councilman Torres, for your contributions and all you've done, Pete, Councilman Torres, you are a person who does people put people first. I've seen you through the years, I've known you since forever, I think, fifth grade in Lafayette Grade School, and I'll leave the rest to your imagination moving forward. So, I want to encourage you to keep continuing doing what you're doing. If there's anything we can do, you know, let us know. And I guess in conclusion, Mr. Chairman, I want to give atta boy, two atta boys for Councilman Emerson and Councilman Spatelli, and of course, I thank everybody for everything they've done through the years, because they stepped up and honored me personally at a time when I was honored by the City of Hammond in getting an atta boy award. And there's nothing greater than to be honored by a group of your peers. They know you best. And I want to honor these two fellows who really stepped up and did some things, and I sincerely appreciate it. So, I guess with that, I just want to wish everyone a blessed, blessed holiday season, and thank you for all that you've done. And if there's anything we can do for you at our American Legion Post 168, do not hesitate to call us, okay?
Thank you, Ernie. Merry Christmas and happy holidays, everybody. Councilman Warple, you have anything to say?
No.
Would you like to make a motion?
No.
To adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.